Thank you all for coming out to our meeting, our regular meeting.
Chairman Jones Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Larkins. Commissioner Adams. Commissioner McGowan.
Here.
Commissioner Malo Jr.
Here.
Attorney Waters.
Here.
Attorney Waters.
All right. Ms. Malo, please.
Yes, sir.
That's great. So, Mr. Malo, thank you for today. We're going to provide your honor, Martin. Thank you for all of the gathering here today. Thank you, Professor, Commissioner, today. Uh, we have to, in our biggest asking, uh, you'll be, uh, most of the followers that I can ask me, do the work for the little kind citizens. Jesus, amen. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, ladies. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can approve to approve with the second, uh, the conditions.
Mr. Chairman, I want to present to the panel, Attorney Waters.
I oppose my second. Commissioner, I oppose my second, Attorney Waters. I oppose motion Qs, uh, in the county meetings.
Chairman, I make a motion. We, uh, about 20 minutes, April 2025.
Motion by Mr. Malo, second. Second. Second, by Mr. Malo. Uh, motion Qs, bench check, April 25.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve county expenses, April 2025.
The motion by Mr. Malo, that's second.
Second.
Second, by Mr. McGowan, on paper, by the opponent. Qs, uh, sorry, Ms. Harv. Cooper.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, I spoke with Attorney Waters last week, and I just wanted to, um, see if it was okay for Mr. Jim Stewart to be, uh, well, what did I need to do? Did I need to rehire him or could we just transfer him because he was still active on the Road and Bridge? But I told by someone in the office that he needed to be treated as a new hire. So, I just wanted to make sure that I cover myself before I do, you know, anything that come back. So, do I need to treat him as a new hire or can he just be transferred over?
I was under pressure to retire. Well, I'm not sure now. You're an officer.
Mr. Stewart retired and he came back. He was working on the Road and Bridge, so he was still active.
He's retired, he's coming back. Yeah. With y'all. Yeah, he's coming back. Yeah. He just hasn't been working.
Did he retire?
He retired, but he came back and is working Road and Bridge. Well, he had been working the Road and Bridge in the last month or so. So, that's, I think that was the issue.
Well, then, if he's, he came back, he's a county employee.
Right.
Do we treat him as new employee if they changed departments?
No, it's just a transfer because I transferred from one department to another.
I mean, I'm just trying to, uh, wh- why would you?
Uh, yeah, like I said, I, I had already told Patrick and Chairman that I was told by someone in the office that he had to be treated as new employee. So, I was just trying to cover myself because I didn't want anything to come back any kind of way. So.
So, you're saying he, I know he quit, he came back, and he quit again on the Road and Bridge?
Well, I would say he quit, you know, he's part-time, so he just wasn't necessarily working. But they had been like a month or so, and he had worked. He still had to act and, you know, it is, you know, consistent. So, it wasn't like he resigned again or said, "I'm done." It doesn't make sense.
I'm trying to figure out where, he was with Road and Bridge.
Yes, sir.
And he decided he wanted to retire. So, he retired, and he got tired of being retired, so he wanted to come back.
Yes, sir.
And then, did he come back as an employee of the county?
Yes, sir.
Well, if he's an employee of the county, and I guess he can be employed to be the janitor, the, the truck driver, the motor grade operator, whatever, he's a county employee.
Yeah.
I don't see where, where the, where, where we going.
I guess the question is, if he hadn't worked in 30 days, then, so if he quit again, so that's, that's my, uh,
I guess that was the issue.
Yeah.
He had worked within 30 days, so I don't know if she considered him.
So, he retired, and he was off 30 days.
He retired, he came back.
Well, how, how soon did he come back?
You know, he had to wait 30 days. But this was 23 or 24.
So, he, he, he waited, came back as a part-time employee?
Yes, sir.
So, the question is, can you now hire him as a full-time employee in the, no?
He doesn't want to be full-time. He's gonna still be part-time. He doesn't need the insurance. He doesn't need working to do the, the truck.
Well, he's already a part-time employee of the county, and all you doing is.
Switching departments.
Move, switch departments. He's a county employee. I don't see where you got to move him, but just keep treating him as a part-time employee, working for the county.
It was that.
Okay, and, uh, it was at 19 in April. So, there will be a trend of, you know, jump from what he was making with Road and Bridge.
I guess that's the decision.
Yeah, that's okay.
Y'all gotta make which way. So, what is the, what is the, what is the hours? Is he working part-time hours?
Yes, sir. So, he wouldn't need the insurance, and he's retired, so he wouldn't be needing.
Well, how, what, what do y'all consider part-time as far as hours? Hey, what is, what is the part-time hours? When we consider somebody.
Some is 7, 7, some is 78. Anything over 8. But some.
78 hours.
Well, well, here's the thing. I know we haven't yet quite adopted a handbook, but once that handbook goes into place, he's not gonna be a part-time employee under the hours.
So, our population should consider just advertising for someone who could be the full-time. Because I would think, you know, I don't, he's, I don't think he's at a place where he can do the full-time because, you know, age, but, so, yeah, maybe I just need to advertise for a full-time person. Or talk with him to see how would he consider, because he is retired.
Let me ask you something. So, as far as drivers, so who's out there doing the rides outside of the ride?
No one.
No one?
And because I don't have anyone, and I didn't want to basically think up, you know, where, where, where that is. So, Derek, you guys may get calls, but again, it's not on me because this issue has been known that we weren't having a driver since the first weekend making. So, if you get any calls, I hope that you guys, you know, go address them because again, it's not on me. I've, I've done my part.
Well, I think at this stage of the game, let me say it this way. Under the, uh, under where we've been operating, he's a part-time employee. If you won't continue him as an employee under those conditions as we stand here today, I think you can't.
I see.
And you just treat him as an employee, a part-time employee. The fact that he was with the Road and Bridge, I don't think makes a hell of a change. He's moving to York Park for once, and if, if and when, uh,
The hand.
The, the handbook is adopted, there's gonna have to be some adjustments made.
Right, right.
Because of what that handbook qualifies as a part-time employee.
I understand.
So, that's kinda, until that happens, I think you're okay.
Okay.
And once, once that decision is made, whether the handbook is adopted, then there's gonna also have to be some decisions on what a part-time employee, those that are now considered part-time may be full-time under the handbook.
Right, right.
Or there could be some privileges as far as the grandfathering of because of the change of status based on an administrative decision. But a, as of today, I think you find him a, being an employee.
Okay.
Uh, but as far as what the number is, what he makes, I guess that's a different decision. But I think that makes sense.
It makes sense, but there's another side to it. Some think he's retired and wasn't working and bringing him back this way, he didn't let go again. Now, you said if he was a part-time employee, it makes sense, but if he wasn't a part-time employee, it don't make sense. If he's gone, he wasn't part-time. Now, if he's part-time, it would probably make sense, uh, to transfer.
But then again, I don't know.
I don't either. Well, the same here. That truck, it can run full-time, it costs a ton. That trash bag, uh, then sometimes. Then, then the guy got to go sometime pick up cans or deliver cans. And we got to solve this problem, because I'm having people tell me a guy should run there at nine o'clock at night, or, or, or by the house, nine o'clock at night, that ain't even safe. We got to solve this problem, and we got to get the pickup, this all fixed, and start paying the friendship. And like I said, if she's gonna be the manager, give her the thought to manage, manage, manage. If they can't give you the thought to do what you need to do, just sit in the office and be able to live and just let your doggy bag up. That's just about life, because this has too many games, everybody's in friendship, in politics, and this ain't no place for that. You know, I'm, I'm stable, I'm stable.
This, this, this is not a time, place.
But we, we got to give it later. If she gonna be the manager, you got to give her the thought, and stop paying taxes.
Right now, right now, the issue is, the employee, and it's, based on everything I've heard, without any more, you're okay. If he's driving that truck, what, what I guess the only decision now is what the pay rate is going to be based upon what he was making and what you pay in solid waste. And until something changes that situation, that's your man, and you got to do his job.
So, there's still, that's what we, uh, establish. So, we establish, what she, what she, what she, what she.
Well, I, I think that's one thing you got to do.
That's not on the agenda before him transferring, while he's transferred at the rate he's making now and retropaying after we come out and vote on his salary adjustment.
It, it's.
What you need to do, you, you, you're asking for approval for the transfer.
Right.
And that's what's on the agenda is as, as we're speaking.
Can I get a motion?
Well, can I speak, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I will say this, I'm not going to second a motion. He make a motion, it's not going anywhere. I'm still, but committed, you know, solid behind the fact that this negotiation has not been terminated until we terminate it by the policies perceived and passed. They have no problem with bringing it up and we terminate, but to me, because I'm concerned, he's not terminating. And that's my position, he's not terminating until we terminate. She want to make a recommendation, he be terminated, somebody make a motion second, and we terminate it, then he's terminated.
But that's all, thank you.
No, he wasn't terminated by us. We will make a recommendation.
Based on the, based on the, uh, reports that I gave you guys back in April 2025, based on the things that I brought to you in May 2025, I made a recommendation that we terminate Mr. Goshen and that we go forward with transferring Mr. Jim Stewart to the county.
Mr. Chairman, for point of clarity, there's a need for that because I've been established that she has the power to run her department. We can't keep going back and forth on what her power is. She is the manager. She has done what she's supposed to do according to the attorney, so there's no need for that.
Make a motion, put it down.
Um, Mr. Jim Stewart's severance, 19 hours.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to transfer Jim Stewart from Road and Bridge to Solid Waste at a salary rate of $18 an hour.
That's a motion, we have a second. We have a second. We have a second.
So, who is standing?
Oh, so, hey, uh.
So, he's giving a, his prior salary, right?
So, can, is it, is it okay for Mr. Jim Stewart to be transferred from Road and Bridge at the Saturday he has with Road and Bridge, which is, I think, is it 15 or 16?
16, 16.
So.
Chairman, I think that falls under what we have a tentative for solid waste hiring. They can transfer Jim Stewart from Road and Bridge to Solid Waste as current salary under Road and Bridge, and retropaying once it come for it.
Motion back, Mr. Malo. We have a second. We have a second. We have a second. Motion back.
Okay, one more thing for our six, six, both of us, Phil. Can I advertise for a driver? If you don't want anyone that's already working, can I advertise for a driver? Just, I'm, I'm waiting to.
Chairman.
Once again, Chairman, Solid Waste hiring is on the agenda. I think it's fall, scope of that. I make a motion that she advertise for a full-time driver.
Motion, we have a second. We have a second. We have a second. Motion back.
Thank you, just.
Let one draw, let one draw, draw, draw his mouth, and, and.
I never did that.
What else? So, Chairman, roll.
I got a question before you start on that. If our trash does not get picked up, what we do with our trash? But now, you're gonna send us a bill every month, and our trash is not gonna get picked up. So, what we need to do with our trash?
Well, some, this is like a natural mechanism so that it can get in the truck.
I think that's, I think that's a good idea. The ones who not voting to, to move the county forward, then get in that truck and drive themselves.
Chairman.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner, I came forward about, uh, salary adjustment in Jada, and, uh, we just need a vote, I'm asking today, can we go on that certain salary adjustment?
Padeen and Kalish.
Padeen, oh, yeah. I just need to go on that salary adjustment.
What, what, what?
Uh, Derek, Padeen, for a move of $14.60 an hour. And this Davis moved $14.77. It already moved $13.
Then you move $14, then you move $15.
Yeah.
You can move to 16.
If a move to, uh, I forget, 16, no. 16, 13. 16, no, 13 an hour. And if Davis moved to $14.77, yes, I already moved the, the, please make the adjustment.
Okay, so we actually recommend, just, get a motion approved, recommendation, just, probably employees.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the share of salary recommendations for Mr. Padeen Morris from 1477 to 1630.
Yes.
And the next one is, Mr. Davis, that's, is that, can't picture, Davis?
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Davis, from 1416 to 1477.
77, yes.
Get a motion approved. I mean, I, I second. Okay, get a motion back, Mr. Malo, second, by Mr. McGowan, on paper, I oppose, motion here.
That, that got to work. On the sub, the sub side, let me tell you, look, look again. All right. Number one, I'm so shocked, I'm ashamed, I'm, remember that three days. I got two people who's born and retired. All right, Lisa retired. And now you're releasing between jail and the sheriff. All right, Shirley won't retire. I cannot let Shirley retire, come Lisa retire. I'm begging Shirley, they, please stay there till Lisa get there. All right, so that's why I need a person, at least enough, you know, to, to be there and Shirley and Lisa, like, that I have, so. All right, now, how can, well, how can I write their salary? All right, if Shirley and Lisa permission is part-time, then they did not get their full-time salary.
If, Corin, would you consider giving them an outcome, you can sit in a fifth hour, I mean, they, they were.
All right, they, they, they can work, they can work eight hours.
Correct.
They can work eight hours. Lisa can't work eight hours, and Shirley cannot make it work eight hours. But in my budget, for this year, I already got them working full-time. Right. So, since they can't do it now, they're gonna flesh out the, in eight hours, I can have that go towards the subside, I prefer to that, I can have.
Well.
Until the October first, I do want to do that.
Now, but you had to keep into consideration that, what, what hour you set on that, that should enable exceed that with, if you want to measure on exhaust, that, that central red hour.
Yeah, well, do we have, what, full time?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, well, I could try to, you know, keep it, but at least I have someone in my office that offers that.
So, that, Fred, so Lisa's out, now, where is she coming?
Uh, I got her home too long.
Damn, I don't know. Yeah, because he gonna play out of your jail budget, that's why I asked you that.
Well, what I'm just saying, you know, you know, Lisa got some other issue with her family, and I, and she tells me.
So, she said, what, June, June, what?
I think she said, yeah, oh, June, the second, with June.
June.
But time she, I think, I got that Shirley.
And Shirley's coming back in the August or September?
Yeah, Shirley got the, uh, 30 days, my, my, my own staying, the holiday.
When is she retiring?
I can't, we can't do it till Lisa come back. I'm telling you, I got that Shirley going, until Lisa come back. I don't have no one in my.
A lot of overlaps.
What I tell you. Well, they, 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 well, I mean, a lot.
But I know.
I know somebody, I know what you're saying. And then, well, Lisa, you know, can't do that, I mean, Shirley can't do that to Lisa.
Right.
And Shirley ready to go.
Well, once Lisa come in, Shirley.
Yeah, but then Lisa's my favorite, and Lisa getting 9.30 hours.
Right.
And then I got to give Lisa between the office and the jail.
Hold on to the make me, give us the, you know, pay the time, figure out.
Well, you know, maybe have to tell like the other day, you know, the news, I'm not in there.
Like this, yeah. I mean, you're, you got a lot of stuff going on. Who's gonna be in, who's gonna be out, who's gonna be able to set program? You're looking at, for what, you're always, you're looking at Shirley, you're looking at Lisa, you're looking at 27.
All right, if I can give one, if I can give one, give me one to put it out. Give me one.
Yeah, now, what is the minimum hours they can work?
Minimum is 30, maximum is 40.
Okay, so we got to get your line, I just need to move something. Because that, the salary's already set.
All right. Well, I'm looking at a little playtime between Lisa and Shirley that they can.
Now, but you guys look, because one's coming out of jail budget, and one's coming out of sheriff budget. Now, see, that's the difference. Lisa comes out of sheriff's salary budget, Shirley comes out of, I mean, sheriff's budget, she comes out of jail budget. See, that's where you're delivering, that's where you're delivering. So, right, so you gotta get some line items, man, make sure we can move something. Yeah, that's a little, a little situation, boy.
So, President, what you saying, give me a food one today, or do you have to wait until it take, take your time? But you finish.
I, I see you waiting.
Any question?
Uh, I was ever done to, uh, hire one, pending, sustain your budget.
Give me, give me one. Give me somebody to put in Shirley.
Got to be after five.
Shirley just be in here working, before I'm trying to make.
All right. If you be, give me somebody to put in Shirley, like Shirley gonna be here and retire, and I can wait on Lisa. Shit, Shirley ready to go, exit, and I can't let her go. Oh, baby, well, yeah, I can.
You, you're a problem, Phil. You're a problem.
I'm not trying to help, I got, I got.
You got to play that shit, man.
I know, I only got that Shirley back.
Do you have to fix a new ticket?
Uh.
Did you say you have a ticket?
I got, I got one in the, you know, train, and I got one get ready on the train. So, I really got the three cent right there.
If you got five, I think, that's what you can't, you can't.
Yeah.
Okay, let me tell you this, now, so you saying the deputy was a deputy. So, you got some, so you got some money set up there, and that deputy, like, if you do a central grant, if you're not gonna hire another deputy right now.
Uh-uh, well, I still got the young lady. Yeah, yeah, she, I got some back to train, she, she, yeah. Wait, wait, yeah, wait, wait, you working, you working in, you looking at town, I'm gonna turn it down, I'm sure you focus town. You tell you, you, you.
You can't basically, you put, you're not going.
Put that money right now, I think. Okay, good. Put it on the agenda for next week, yeah, put it on for next week, and I could give you a concrete. Right now, there's just so much at play right here. I mean, it's a living, it's a pleasure, and, hey, y'all get it together, build a agenda.
That'd be fine, that'd be fine.
All right, save your social, right? Go back, we got, hold.
Chairman, you got that, you just got that?
Also, I have seen on the.
Look at, snap, contract, Chairman. Same as the next one, Chairman?
Yes.
So, not the train, front of the house?
Yeah, got a track, uh, not track, so.
I would say I'm gonna ask the commissioner to go down and take a look at the floor and that bill and see if it was necessary to be replaced, you know, in the roof. I don't know how many went down and took a look, uh, well, if they didn't take a look, I took a look. And I just want to share this with you. Uh, that floor is a durable floor, and, and, and I think that, uh, up top could be, now, now, that's my opinion. But anyway, when it comes to dealing with a contract, a work, uh, this amount, I'd like to shop at the union springs and get a quote for the work we gonna do and keep our money in town. So, just let me know what, because I'm not, I'm contracting outside of town, do some work in here. I'm, I'm all about keeping money in rural county, rural county money in rural county.
Well, you just said it, put that TV up, that man couple months, never put the TV up, or put the wire up in here. And he told me, and went back up to jail, drop the price under the bid law. He told me, drop, friend.
No, no, I said, I'm saying what I'm saying now, about this.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's big.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When you hang out and look at the floors, because I wonder where you look at it. But I can show you a second where the floors need fixing.
Well, okay, uh.
I can show you now.
Well, this will be on the agenda next time, and I'll come down and take a look.
This is the third time that we've cast and put on the dent, and put on the dent. The building need fixing, this old building, it have not had anything done to it. We still got leaks up in the top. The water still come up on the nose inside the cellar.
Well, I can go ahead and come down and take a thorough look. Follow me.
Okay, come, I said.
Chairman.
Because the roof has had some.
I mean, yes, sir.
No, we have, we have. Go make a motion, look, and go look at it, and we all look at it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I can, I can, I'm.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Have presented contract, uh, tracks, general contract, I make a motion that we have to contract tracks, general contract for the amount of $39,000, $50 repairs at the same center.
That's a motion, uh, Mr. Malo, we have a second.
I'm gonna reserve my opinion till I take a look at what, uh, Mr. Terry just showed with me, and, uh, the, I'm gonna reserve my opinion, no sadness.
Motion back. Uh, building needs light to grow, LED lights, licensing in the hallway, and how they install it. Motion for food, and LED bill.
Mr. Chairman, we discussed that last week, I make a motion that we put the LED lights in the courthouse on purpose.
Get a motion back, Mr. Malo, we have a second.
Second.
Second, by Mr. Malo. Gavin, on the table.
All right.
Ladies, motion here, uh, Harv, this gentleman, uh, consultant, consultant. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve, uh, Bremer's commission, and Al's commission for a total amount of $50,000, $9,000, $30,000, and that ain't a cent.
$8,000.
$8,000, okay.
That's a motion back, Mr. Malo, we have a second.
Second.
Second, by Mr. Gavin, ladies, motion here. That's their point.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we hire part-time employees for courthouse and general to a position under set program.
Second, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I mean, I, 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 I'm just, uh, I'm just, uh, I'm just. I'm just, I'm just. Vote, I mean, I would, I would, I would, uh, I would say that, but.
Because we was giving, I was thinking, so that, that, you're saying thirty million?
No.
And that's what I, we're going back, we're showing, had the time to, and we can.
Okay. And they're out, and the salary paid for the story.
You know, they start at thirteen or nine.
Fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, two lessons, okay.
Just a little, uh, get him next morning.
Um, possibly maybe Monday, but Monday's a holiday for us, but you also make it Tuesday.
Case you come, case you come out office with forty years and we can meet.
Oh, yeah, and there'll be some paperwork that Mr. Patrick I have to do with his clerk here at the job supervisor.
Okay.
So I'll get her party this afternoon, set up a meeting.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, thank you all. So that'll be June third.
Yeah, that's it.
We have a motion, Jerry, Jim. Second. Table, vote here. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.